You're good.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this workshop for Waterbury's Board of Education on May 7, 2020. Silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have any reflections that you want to incur with this? I can't get her unmuted.
She's muted.
Am I still muted?
Nope, you're okay.
I would just like to call to mind all of our staff and our families, the city of Waterbury, and all of those whose lives have been either lost or grieving because of the loss of anyone during this time. And I'd just ask that we keep them in our thought and our prayers at this time.
Thank you. Liz Brown, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
And to the Republic which stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Liz. Our first item is the Committee on Finance, March 2020 Monthly Expenditure Report during the OIA. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This is actually as an FYI to the board. This is just through the month of March. I do want you to know that this, this report does not reflect anything that happened after March 12th due to the crisis with the coronavirus. It's not reflected in this report yet. Because at the time when I had to put this together, I mean, we really didn't know. There's still negotiations happening.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, she's muted and I can't unmute her.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes.
Now, okay.
I'll start over. This, this was to, as an FYI to the board, but I do want to know, you to know that this is through March. However, this does not reflect anything that happened after March 12th, coronavirus and the school closure. When I had to prepare the report, obviously, we don't know any.
What's up?
Costs that were associated at that time. So just so you know that this report for March does not include anything or any adjustments having to do with that.
Okay. So just sign out and sign back in what?
Doreen, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay.
So this isn't really much different than, than the January or February report. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
This is still in process, correct?
Yeah, I mean, this is through the month of March, the report, but like I said, this does not reflect anything and any adjustments that we may have to make to the report based, you know, on the school closure due to the virus.
Doreen?
Yes?
Do you think that because of the closing of the school, there's going to be a little bit more surplus this year?
Um, I would predict that we, we will not be in a deficit because of it. No. I think that we may surplus a little more in some areas and, but again, there's some costs involved that maybe we can repurpose some of that funding in other areas. So I do see that we would have a savings, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. Hi, Doreen. I, I thank you for the, you know, leading, lead into these numbers. But I do have a couple of questions on some, you know, I'm going to go to the red ones. Early incentive. What is that?
That's, uh, that is the payout when the, the SAW, the WTA retirees and they get paid out for their. Objection, that the amount we budgeted, we know ahead of time, but there's also additional. The reason it's going in the red is if people have, are retiring and we didn't know and they have a payout. And that's also for non-certified people as well. So that's what goes into that line.
Okay, so you have some unknowns that pop up. Okay, I get that.
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
And then we also had, I'm trying to find out my phone because my, my copy of everything is on my iPad and I'm using it for the meeting. The next one is Swing Space.
Yeah, so that was for the St. Joe's building that we use for Wendell Cross. So during the summer months back in July and August, that is the overtime that was allotted for our workers when they were prepping the building and getting it ready for the opening of the school.
Okay, and there are just some delay hits to your accounts? Because it kind of looks like it's in March.
Um, no, that is, that is really for the Swing Space. No, that was, that was for the overtime that was associated with the St. Joseph Building.
Yeah, and I know we had a rush to get that open, so.
Yeah.
The one that I was surprised that has what appears to be March cost is public transportation. Unless that's just a cume and I'm reading the report wrong.
Yeah. What number are you talking? You're looking in the encumbrance?
Oh, yeah.
Pupil transportation.
Pupil transportation?
I'm sorry, I couldn't read my own handwriting. Pupil transportation.
Yeah, that's our busing cost. So the expenditure through March has been $9.5 million. And the encumbrances is what we have left on the purchase orders to our vendors at the 5.6.
But then, we couldn't have had costs in March unless there are fixed fees. We have to pay the bus company.
This is accumulated. This is from July through March.
So it is cumed. Okay.
Yes.
It didn't say cumed, so I wasn't sure.
The expenditures accumulated, yes.
Okay, so you know what? I had two more and that explains what they are. So.
Okay.
I won't go any further. Thanks, Doreen. Thanks, Mr. President.
Any other questions for Doreen?
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Van Stone, Jason.
On some of those items, and we could stay in the pupil transportation. It's my understanding that we're going to continue to pay some of those contracts despite them not running, right? That was one of the executive orders that came down from the governor?
Right. That's correct. But we are working on negotiating with our, our contractors to reduce the amount from the closure of school to the last day of school. So that's in, with our legal department right now.
So there might be some savings there, but it probably wouldn't be necessarily what the public might assume. Since buses aren't really running, it's not going to be zeroed out for the rest of the year.
No. No, they will, we will still be paying the bus company, but at a reduced rate.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Doreen.
Hey, thank you.
Our next agenda item, Committee on Finance, request approval of a professional services agreement with Stanley Convergence Security Solutions Incorporated to provide monitoring and servicing of school security systems. Mr. Will Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next three things are, well, next two things are contracts for services that, that we've had in place for many years. It's essentially a continuation of those services at the rate that have, that have been in place from the procurement of those services. This is a continuation of Stanley, which is the alarms, alarm service monitoring for our school systems with a security perspective. So we're asking for that to be approved as for all of our buildings, the alarms coding in and out. And it monitors the alarms and reports those back to us and to the public safety as needed when alarms occur.
Any questions for Will on this contract? Commissioner Thomas Van Stone and then Jason Van Stone. I see your hands up. Commissioner Tom?
I guess this is the Van Stone show tonight, so. Will, I do have a few questions. I did read through the contract and, and I see it is a sole source contract. It's based on good perform. A procedure or policy in place to get an approval for a sole source on a contract like this?
Yes, and I could certainly defer to Commissioner Orso as well, but we go through a process with purchasing to review that. In this particular case, the technology is proprietary to Stanley. And you could look at other alarm services and so forth, but what you'd end up doing, at least in a one-time ratio, to pay to rip out the proprietary software and essentially the, the monitoring elements of some of the wiring and have to reinstall all of that. So that's generally is one reason why you wouldn't want to make the flip and why the sole source makes sense to continue with what we know, everything that we've already paid for essentially to be installed and, and to continue with it. But we've had these services and this particular technology. We review that with Kevin over in purchasing and he approved it as a sole source. I think Rocco had approved it in years past.
I, that explanation, if it came before me, I would certainly approve. I said that was a good explanation. So thanks, Will. Couple of other questions, though. When I looked at the individual, you know, they had the itemization in the, in the backup that you sent us. We have four different buildings using the 38 Church address, including one saying Enlightenment, which Enlightenment's not there anymore. It's over in the Powell Building. So I didn't understand. The.
Saint Anne's Church, Saint Anne's Recreary.
Yeah, some of that's historical and where they originally were and basically can move the, the stuff to the other building. So it kind of, the way they, what's in their records enlisted and what's in our records, you know, sometimes there's a little bit of confusion, but it essentially works to where those particular devices were. They could be moved over and they basically add the, we could sort of net out essentially a building. But I'll certainly go through that with, with Raj and Chris and, and make sure that, and we, they generally do a pretty good job of knocking out an address if something comes off or we move something out of a program. But then what we usually can do is flip it over and basically it evens out if we open up another building. So we try to net out as much as we can and avoid adds if we're, if we're dropping something. But I think most of that deals with the moves that happened years ago with Enlightenment as that program grew and the construction and the move over State Street and the early childhood program.
Right. Right. Yeah, I could envision what they were. I just wanted to double check it.
Yeah, it's a bit of a mix and match. And so then we really, you know, in this particular contract, you know, Raj and our group knows that sort of Enlightenment means actually State Street and State Street actually means Enlightenment and so forth.
Right.
Gets security grants and other ones.
Me reading here.
Confusing. You, you put the grant in and it's one address and then you flip a building and the name changes. The state wants to go on the address, but it's really a different building.
All right, and, and last two on this. And you just mentioned grants. What is the funding source for this?
This is.
Is this in our budget?
Yeah, it's in the budget through the, the general fund. If we can, you know, hit other funds to, to move off of it. But essentially, this is one of those sort of core expenses that generally falls into, you can't supplant side of the world.
Oh, somewhere, somehow, we have accounted for it already.
Yes, yes.
Okay, not going to be a new, new hit.
No.
And the last thing was. Last thing I know, we're under mayoral approval for expenses exceeding certain value. Did this have to get the mayor's approval?
This was kind of in the queue before that. So the short answer is no. The long answer is he sees all these agendas.
Anyway, he does see them anyway.
Yeah, and they sort of run through the corp council and, and purchasing. They, they wouldn't get on the agenda if it hadn't been through a gauntlet.
Okay. That's good. Thanks, Will. Thanks, Mr. President.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone, before I go to you, I noticed Commissioner Orso rose his hand to make a comment while Will was talking. Commissioner Orso, do you have anything to add in?
Clearly on the sole source, which I approved for years. The security system, this is the technology he's talking about, is the sound in each room. No other security system had a sound. If there's something in any room in any of the schools, they can go right to that room. And this is why it's been a sole source for years.
Thank you. Commissioner Jason Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, my, my questions were all answered during Commissioner Van Stone's questions regarding the funding sources and the addresses. So I am all set. Thank you.
So the two Van Stone Commissioners are answering each other's questions.
Great minds.
All right.
I brought him up well.
I don't see any hands. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Will, that's number three, a request for approval of a professional services agreement with Facility Support Services LLC to provide on-call environmental services and AHERA inspections.
This is the, a result of a bid. This is a company that provides our on-call inspections. The state requires certain AHERA inspections and, and follow-up and paperwork associated with work you might be doing in any environmental area, asbestos and other things. So this company does those inspections for us and does a check on our records to make sure that we have the proper documentation in each of our facilities. They work well with our group and we haven't had any issues with them. And this ITB, the pricing is consistent with what it's spent in the past and asked for your approval. It is a requirement of the state that we do this testing and we do these reporting. Having it done by a third party, I think adds a, a certain layer of, of independence to it as well, which is beneficial.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Clark? Tom Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, easy question, funding source.
Okay, general, this is one of those things we just got to do. So we, we budget for it. It's in our, our maintenance and operations account in, in our budget there.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Will? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
The next one is the.
For school facilities, say again?
I'm sorry, I was, I was getting ahead of you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Request approval for educational specifications for the proposed Generali School Roof Project. Mr. Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is step one in the process here of the Generali Roof Project. So we have to start by the request for approval for us to move forward with the specifications for the proposed roof project. This would be the, essentially the entire roof of Generali. The portables or modulators are generally not reimbursable under the state program, but based upon pricing and how we get through this project and move along in the next few phases of this, we're going to try to see if we can't do those as needed as well. But it's proper, if you will, which is well past its life. And we have had some leaks and maintenance issues on our lifecycle analysis. This was the next one in the line. Worked with the city and the Capitol folks over there and they've given us the green light to begin moving forward with this. So the first stop is for you to get our approval and then we have that stamp and then we can move, begin the process with the state and DAS to start that specifications. We'll be back a number of times with budgets and approvals for money down the line, but this is step one.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Juanita? Are you looking, are you raising your hand? Commissioner, no, okay. Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Just a quick question, Will. Could you remind me, what, what's the reimbursement from the state? And it's like 78 and a half or 80% or something like that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just under 80% currently and hopefully that stays. I mean, there's always a rumor and the potential that that could go down, but at the moment it is. That's what it's at, same as it is for the Wendell Cross project at this point. So we're looking to take advantage of that, obviously, and, and push this through if we can.
To your point there, if I may follow, Mr. President, you know, with all. Maybe, you know, as we go down the road a little bit, is there any project currently in the queue that we're kind of thinking, ah, we should probably do this, but it's not emergent yet? We're kind of bumping it a little bit higher on the priority to save 5%, 10% reimbursement might make sense?
Yes, I think that's a good, good. Then we do talk to Michael Blank about, and Sarah Gary and Doreen as, as a finance team. And we've looked at prioritize and what we can move forward. As you know, in the last couple of years, we have obviously moved forward the Wendell Cross project, but also three elevator projects that are just about almost complete. And with the school closure, we've been able to actually keep moving along on those. So those are, those four are actually just about done. We got two more that are in, in process of beginning that you've approved and this roof project. So we've actually been doing exactly that to push all these up. They have been kind of sitting for a bit. So these are really some of the most urgent ones. But certainly, we're, we, in our plan and our project, we're thinking about, you know, roof project or so every year or so. And, and to the extent we can escalate that, it'd be great. My sense would be in talking to the city and the current capital budget that, you know, we're, we're sort of fortunate to have moved these along and it might be tough for us to get any more. But you can rest assured that at least in those meetings, Doreen and Raj and I are working with Sarah and Mike and pushing as hard as we can to get our share of capital funds.
Terrific. Thank you.
Well, any other questions? Tom Van Stone, is that your handle?
Through you, Mr. President. Well, just a couple of clarifications for my benefit. No problem with the, with the ask. Certainly no problem with $46,000. Just a little confusion for me on what is page 52 of the handout. It's page six of 25 of that particular section. And it's just the itemization of the $46,000. It, it has a, a three-year period of $30, or $3,800. And then a second item for the year 2021, which would be, make 2021 listed twice for $5,000. And to get us to the 46, there's a $30,000 contingency controlled. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand how we're actually spending this $46,000. No problem changing a roof. That's, that's a given, but.
Yeah, part of it is you, you have to fill in the blanks the way the state sets up these forms. So you, you do, as you start these projects, need to hit the years and the boxes that they want you to, to hit. You've got to cover specific pieces of the puzzle. The contingency ends up, you know, really becoming more clear as you move along with the specifications. If you find that there may be asbestos and whatnot, then some of that's going to go to environmental remediation and, and design. If they find there's issues with the side of the building, we might need to be working from that may lead to some others. So that contingency then gets spilled out as we go. But this basically gives us the ability to move forward, start doing that design work, doing that spec work, which is relatively cost-effective. It depends on what they find when, when those other items may add up. For example, in some of the current elevator projects, we did have some issues with some environmental pieces. So you have to adjust the design, make sure you have certain tests done and whatnot. And that, that's really where that will become more itemized as we move along. This is, so it's essentially a placeholder in many respects at this stage of the process. And as we begin the specs, then more detail comes and then we move on, very much like the Wendell Cross. Projection on as the bids come in, you fill in the blanks and then anything you can take advantage of cost-effectively can come back into the project as well.
That's a good explanation. In my world, it's called a planning package. So I, yeah, I get what you're saying. It's just that usually you see the reverse, right? You don't see the, the biggest number on contingency. But I understand how you're using that.
Because where we are in the process, yeah.
Going to well.
Yeah, you've got to reverse your thinking because this is the state.
Right. That's where I was not seeing the, the connection. So that's a good explanation.
They're trying to adopt some private sector rules, but haven't quite got there yet.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. Makes all the sense in the world to me now. Thanks, Will. Thanks, Mr. President.
Anyone else have a question for Will Clark?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Rocco Orso?
Yes, I'm glad this roof is finally done because I've been, for years, they've been talking about it. So I'm really happy it is being done. Just a quick question. Hillary and Rosa are going to be doing the specs for this?
Yes, I think that, that's, that's the plan. Yep.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Liz Brown?
Hi, Will, while you're there, I just had a question in terms of future projects. Do you envision any new expenditures to upgrade technology in our schools, you know, as we're moving towards more and more distance learning? Do, is there anything that you're envisioning that we need to upgrade to accommodate that?
I don't want to steal the thunder of the superintendent later in the agenda. Short answer, yes. There'll be a much deeper dive later on tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Look, any other questions for Will? Okay, hearing none. We're going on to the next agenda item, number five, Committee on Policy and Legislation. Discussion proposed revisions to the following policies in light of COVID-19. Is Ann Sweeney taking this one?
I believe so.
Okay, then the floor is yours, Ms. Sweeney.
So the Policy and Legislative Committee met yesterday to review our current grading policies, high school, middle school and elementary school, to look at language related to the incidence of COVID-19. It has shown us that we, at any point in time, could be an emergency situation where students would not be able to physically attend a classroom school. There would have to be some outside learning and we would have to look at how we grade that progress. The committee discussed it. We're looking at general language that would be added to each policy that would, in, in general, just simply state that if there is a crisis, that if children cannot physically be in school and we need to adjust the grading for that period of time, that would give the superintendent that authority to do that, to come up with a plan, to notify the board of what that plan is, and then to implement that plan. So the first language that we looked at simply stated, "In the event that schools are unexpectedly closed under a municipal, state or federal mandate for 10 or more consecutive school days, the superintendent will provide equitable grading procedures in the best interests of all students that account for such closure and communicate the changes in the procedures. In the event of such a closure, the superintendent's grading procedure will supersede the following formulas and grading policies. These procedures will remain in effect by decision of the superintendent until the following policy is equitable for all students." So that was written in the framework of that, that that would be a preamble to each of those policies. So in the event that there was a need for the superintendent to adjust grading policies, it would be, everything that followed that preamble would, would be preempted by that preamble and whatever the superintendent puts in place at that point in time. So we had some discussion on it. There was some concern about. The mention of the policy is equitable for all students to Commissioner Jason Van Stone's point. We struggle with equity on a daily basis. So, you know, would we, how would we make sure that we are doing what is equitable? We believe that our superintendent, of course, would want learning to be equitable for all students to the best of our ability to provide that. So we massaged the language just a little bit and amended the policy to read "in the event of such a closure." Amended the, um, policy to read in the event of such a closure, the superintendent's grading procedures will supersede the following formulas and grading policies. These procedures will remain in effect by decision of the superintendent until such time the superintendent deems appropriate. That is the language that the committee, uh, took a vote on last night. Um, and that did pass, uh, four to one to be recommended to the full board for approval. In looking at that language again last night after the meeting, um, Darren Schwartz recognized. That we had, we had agreed to put the language at the bottom of the policy, the end of the policy as opposed to a preamble. And there is languages there that indicates that it would be before our current policy. So we are now proposing. That. The language be amended in the third line to, in the event of such a closure. The superintendent's grading procedures will supersede all formulas and grading policies. So in making that change, whether it goes at the top or goes at the bottom. The the policy could the, um. The addition, um, will address, uh, each of those policies. And that's all. That is.
Okay, any, uh, any questions, Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you. Um, I was a. Public thing to this meeting last night. And I did not speak at it, but I do have plenty of concerns with this. The commit, uh, the superintendent we have right now. I, uh, absolutely have no issue with granting any power. Uh, but when we put it in the policy and somewhere down the road, um. It's it's superintendent, maybe we have disagreements with, uh, to give an open. Ended item in a policy is just not how you write policy. Um. It also opens a door to how many other policies for a significant event like a pandemic. How many other policies do we have to go in and look at? Uh, I think there's a few, so. I I get it. We're reacting to the times and that's the mode we're in right now for everything. My work and I'm sure of one else's work, we're in a reaction mode. Um, but I I just can't support having this language in as such, uh, to not have. A piece of a conclusion, which we don't because it's it's at the mercy of the sitting superintendent. Um, I have no issue with the past fail that's been pretty much sent to us. Uh, as the the way to do business, I'm I'm fine with that. Uh, but I am not fine with the way this policy is written. And, um, I I'm sure we're going forward with this. I have concern too that the 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 language was changed outside of the committee. Uh, so I guess technically the committee didn't vote on the change that we heard tonight. So I'm not sure how that works either. Uh, plus this is what we're going to do going forward and because this is not a special meeting. We're not going to vote on it tonight. Uh, we'll vote on it in two weeks. Uh, assuming that we don't have a postponement or anything like that, so. Um. I I'm just struggling with the implementation, uh, of this at this time. So if we're voting tonight. Um, and again, I, the the superintendent knows and we've discussed how much I will go to war for. Um, but the language in this policy outside of who our superintendent is right now, I I just can't be in favor of. So, uh, if we're voting tonight, I I would be voting no. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, after we had wrapped up last night. And I had a little more time to think about it. I think the intent of this policy change is 100% correct. Um. Although I do understand, you know, Commissioner Van Stone's point of ceding a lot of authority to the superintendent at the time. And, you know, I've had three superintendents so far. And I think it would allow all of those people to have made the decision, but I don't know what's in the future as well. So I didn't know if this board wanted to consider some language that allows, you know, you know. You know, the last sentence to read something along the lines that these procedures will remain in effect by decision of the superintendent and approval of the board. Until such time the superintendent and board deem appropriate. So it would bring at least the board, whether it be the 10 of us or 10 people in 50 years, a little back into the conversation at least.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Rocco Orso?
I I totally agree with Jason. I think that there has to be some protection for, like I said, again, I I totally. Uh, think that the the current superintendent would do, does a great job, but I think in the future stuff in future. Like even my my own history in the purchasing department, they were saying there's stuff in there to give the purchasing director too much. And they were worried about who's going to come next and you've got to watch yourself, you know, and I think that's like putting it in about the board. Approving it, I think is an excellent suggestion.
Commissioner Anne Sweeney?
Um, I do, I do want to, you know, point out that it that it does state, um. Uh, that the superintendent. Will communicate the changes in procedures. And certainly at any point that any superintendent communicates to us anything that is changing. We as board members have a right to question those changes. We as board members have a right to bring that to a board for a vote if that's what we want to do. Um, so there is some language in there. If we feel we want to strengthen it. Um, I don't, I don't know that putting it in the last sentence is where you want to do that. Because that sentence clearly states that the procedures that the superintendent puts in, in terms of the emergency. Stay in place until such time as the superintendent approves returning to the original policy. So I'm I'm not sure, Jason, wh- which you're looking at. Are you looking at? When the superintendent presents something in. Reference to the the current emergency? Are you looking at the return to the normal?
If I may, Mr. President, I think a little bit of both. I think the board should have the opportunity to approve the. And then when. At a given time in the future, we're returning to quote unquote normal, that both entities get to weigh in when we return. You know, I. And and oftentimes my mind seems to go to the worst case scenario, but let's pretend tomorrow COVID is solved. Right? Everyone's healthy again. We've beaten it. Thank God. What if a superintendent at the time never decides to go back because that person didn't deem it appropriate yet? You know, what recourse would we have if we in this policy has said, listen, the superintendent at the time. You know, whenever they feel fit and and secure that we can go back to a normal grading policy, we'll do that. Um, that's why I would like some some reference at least to the board having the ability to to bring us back to that world.
Okay, um, so I. My feeling on this is 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 that my concern would be at. The time of the emergency that any superintendent is able to react quickly. Um, and I know we can call an emergency meeting and all that, but you're still talking. You know, uh, you're still talking 24, 48 hours before a superintendent can move. I don't think we want to corral any superintendent in that manner. However, we do have the authority to question any moves that a superintendent makes. And to require a vote on them once we have differences of opinion. So. Um, putting it at the end to make sure that they make that move and bring us back to normal when we think that's, I I I think that's appropriate.
I think, if I may, Mr. President, with the 10 school day language, within that two weeks of school or whatever long it may be. You know, that would be the appropriate time for a superintendent to lay out to a board, hey? You know, this thing seems to be coming down the pike. You know, we're going to be out of school for more than the 10 days. We need to visit this opportunity to change a grading policy. What do you guys think about this? Because if you utilize the current situation, and I don't particularly have much of a problem with how we're going to do it. But if a superintendent on a Monday told the district, hey, this is our policy going forward, parents understand this is where we are. And then at the next board meeting, two days, a week, two weeks later, the board goes. Yeah, never mind that. We want to do this. I think that leads to more confusion in. In a district than trying to come out of the gate with both entities being on the same page.
Vice President Harvey, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Um. Okay, so, yeah, it wasn't mentioned, uh, viewpoint I had, I was the one who voted, uh, no. Um, to this policy, um, and. I think number one reason why I voted no was because I felt that we were advocating responsibility. As, um, commissioners on the Board of Education. Um, when I ran and was elected to the Board of Education, it was. I had responsibilities in an emergency situation and a non-emergency situation. Um, and it made me nervous. Again, I will, uh, you know, kind of echo what everyone else has said. Um. With this current superintendent, I have no issues with that. But the a su- the superintendent I'm referring to as that position. Um, the position of a superintendent to have this authority makes me very nervous. Um, very, very nervous. We are elected on the board to set policy, whether it's during an emergency or non-emergency. So that is why I voted against this. And if we're going to look at this type of governance, um. And we look at the, um, org chart, um, this falls on us. We now have opportunities now to have other ways or other means of having of of meeting as we are doing so right now. So, um, any emergency, now I've been on this board for some 13 years. Um. I mean, we've had emergencies, um, as I can recall. Uh, we've met, we've called emergency meetings. Um, and we've done, we've taken care of things that are our responsibility as commissioners. So, um, I I really have a problem with this. I have a problem with the wording. I have a problem with even putting it, um, in as a policy. Um, so I I, uh, am not in favor of this at all. Um, I think we really should to think about as commissioners, what our responsibilities are. When we took the oath, um, to be commissioners, when we ran for this board, what our responsibilities are. So, um, I totally against this and, um, just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Commissioner Liz Brown, did you have a comment or a question?
No, I just, you know, I guess after the meeting, I too kind of, you know, was thinking about it. And I like the direction Jason is going because I do, I do think that the board needs to weigh in on these decisions. So I would be in favor of amending the language to have the board, uh, approve any changes recommended by the superintendent. Uh, because I I think that is an important role. And, uh, the public deserves to know our thoughts on such an important change. So I would be in favor of the amended language as Jason is talking about. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right, I I kept my mouth shut during it, but I'll give you my perspective on things. Um, according to state statute, the superintendent is the CEO of the system. It's her job to set the tone of the managerial style that she wants to run. We are agents for the state of Connecticut. That's where we get our power from. I tend to side by how the legislative is written and the the CEO is Dr. Ruffin. And it's part of her job that doesn't get. I I think we're being a little bit too nitpicky here with policy agenda. This is her job as superintendent. She's the CEO of the system. Um. And if it ever went to arbitration with the state, I'm sure she'd be the winner's seat on who calls the shots. We're commissioners, we're not managers. We're legislators, we're not minutia makers. That's the end of my comments. I'm going to be voting in favor of it. Thank you. Next agenda item, if there's no other discussion. Is number six, Committee of the Whole, the superintendent's update to the board. The floor is yours, Madam Ruffin.
Am I unmuted now?
You're on.
All right, so I have several items to talk with you about, so I'll go to the most controversial one first so that you can, um. We can get to the lighter stuff later. Uh, last night, I I said that I would send you the, um, compilation of notes and, uh, direction for the grading procedures. That I shared with you before last night, but I shared it with you last night with some other documents that it could be fresh to your memory. Um, at at this time, um, since, uh, it's, you know, there was some discussion, uh, relative to grading and grading policies. Uh, I would like to ask you, before I go on with my other items here for presentation to you. Did you have any questions about the grading procedures, the communication, uh, the processes and the current, uh, way that we are moving forward? Not not the policy that you were talking about, the information that I shared with you, part of that. Do you have any questions for me about that at this time?
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one question, Superintendent. I would say I'm 99%. 100, uh, 99% in support of this. The only thing I've ever heard kind of as a pushback, and I've shared this with you already, is some parents out there. Have concerns that there might be a detrimental effect on their child.
Mm-hmm.
And I think in the vast majority of the cases, that's not going to be the case. And I understand that we've gotten pretty specific guidance from the state of Connecticut, which more often than not is the beginning and the end of the discussion. I guess the question I've been asked, and I don't know what logistical nightmare it might have created. But was there any opportunity for, um. A parent to, instead of accepting for the third quarter specifically, because that's what I hear about a lot, is that since. We got essentially 75% or so through that quarter. Would there have been the opportunity for a a child to have, rather than take? The route we seem to be going, instead to have said, I would like my grade as of the last day of in classes. To be my grade for the quarter. Is that even something that could have been allowed as a an opt-in from a student or a parent?
Uh, so I'll I'll elaborate on on why I believe that could have and would have been problematic. When schools closed and our last day was officially on March the 12th, um. While we had some. Limited items on the website for online learning, we had not yet developed our distance learning platform. Uh, and while we did have packets that were created relatively soon. It was not something that was accessible by every single child who was officially out of school as of March 13th. Uh, there were some teachers that did not wait for a union contract, that did not wait for any kind of communication with their students. They may have already had some kind of online platform and those teachers may have continued to communicate with their students and proceed with the class. They they they, and and some of that did happen. Uh, it wasn't mandated. It was, it was just, you know, teachers reaching out to students and continuing. Um, and that was irrespective. It it really didn't matter whether it was an advanced student or not an advanced student. It was just some people did it and most people didn't, and that was the status of it. So some students continued to perhaps get some feedback, maybe even grades, uh, and input from teachers. While the majority of the people just absolutely did not. Uh, so to come in and and say that that we would. So to come in and say that we would allow that to happen to some students, while some students wouldn't have had the benefit of having a teacher even make that connection until after we were officially back and we had the beginnings of a plan. I think that would have provided some inequities. It probably would have made some people very pleased that at least that was recognized. But at the same time, it could have been detrimental to some students that did not have that same opportunity. And it just seemed unfair any way you looked at it. So I'm not saying that this is the best plan in the whole wide world, but no one was expecting that we would be in a pandemic. We had some outstanding students. We had outstanding honor students and students that were just exemplary students that really did not have any opportunity to log on or to be able to have any access to a computer or access to learning for those 10 days and beyond that of that third quarter. And when the state came to the table with several, there were several, you know, executive orders by the governor. There were a lot of conversations with the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Cardona. There were a lot of. You know, this is the way that we're going to be able to say unequivocally, we will have no issues. That just didn't exist, you know? And so we did the best thing in Waterbury that we thought was going to provide at least some fairness for students, especially in light of the fact that we had at that time a large number of students that still could not connect and still did not have access to a teacher for a period of time. And so I'm not saying it's the best thing forever, but I am saying is the very best decision that could be made at this time. I'm sorry.
And I, and I, and I completely understand that. And, you know, I've been on the board about 10 years now and I'm still waiting for us to craft the perfect policy. So, so I understand perfection isn't something that really is in our vernacular. And as a parent of two kids who are now in college, depending on which kid I was talking about, you know, I might be more upset or not. You know, one of my kids. Grades had finally closed. He got all things needed to be done. We had all the conversations with teachers to make sure that he was successful for that quarter. Then I had another one who was out of the gate was going to do fine. So I understand that perfection was never something we were going to achieve. And I think this in general is probably the best way we could have gone. But I just wanted to ask the question to see if there would have been a way where, you know, those 4.0 students, those kids who out of the gate, you know, did everything they needed to do, they were ahead of the game. Whether or not the teachers were necessarily prepared for this or not, could have kind of stood pat on the grade they had had 75% of the way into the quarter and just said, okay, for all intents and purposes, this is my grade for the quarter. But I understand we were never, never in a, in a perfect world.
Now, and, and when we looked, we looked at the, the, what we could definitively save was that quarter one and quarter two was completely finished. It did not affect class rank, which was very important to our students and in importance that if, if class rank was going to be, because for some students, it ties into scholarships, especially our seniors currently, they were not going to be negatively affected because that provided class rank at the end of the second quarter. And yes, Commissioner, that was, that was thought about. But what we're currently doing now is the fairest that we could be, given the situation of a pandemic at this time.
Thank you.
Any other comments for Dr. Ruffin while we have Commissioner Charles Stango?
Thank you. Doctor, this has nothing to do with the policy we're looking at. It has more to do with your request. I hear your discussion and I read the articles and I read what you sent to us. To me, it seems like it's two different worlds of pass fail for a third grader and pass fail for a junior in high school. And assuming that some children have never responded and some children are not doing the work, so feasibly, would these children, no matter what grade level, fail for that quarter? And if they fail for that quarter, will they fail for the fourth quarter? And if they fail for the third and fourth quarter, will they have to repeat the grade? And will that cause havoc in going forward with class sizes and everything else? How true are we going to stay to that edict about fast pass fail? Or incomplete, complete, incomplete? Are we going to be held accountable? Are they going to be held accountable? Or at some point is the Commissioner of Education going to forgive all and say, everybody pick up where they left off? There's, there's a lot of issues that I think could come up from here. And I just wanted to put down, that has nothing to do with your policy. I mean, the policy that we're putting forward, which I do support at this point in time. My question was just your invitation for a question. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And all of those questions pose a lot of uncertainty for everybody and we're not going to resolve it by the end of the third quarter. And we may not resolve it by the end of the year. For a lot of people, not just Waterbury and probably not even only for the state of Connecticut. Because what we're, what we are, what we are definitely certain about is that this pandemic affected the world. That's, 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 I'm just going to be candid and just, so it affected everybody. So when we're talking about students across the world and not, perhaps they're not being on grade level, it's not just a Waterbury thing. And, and then when we consider that we don't know how to interpret that pass fail, when we have clearly been given guidance from, from the state, that we are to look at student engagement. It doesn't say student mastery. It doesn't say student, you know, total understanding of every single thing that happened after March 13th. It just says try to get students engaged with a disclaimer. Understand that there are some children going through a trauma, some families that are not going to be able to settle down and even get students to be in one place for any period of time to engage in learning when perhaps they're dealing with big issues of finding food and housing and all of those situations. So while states are helping and probably giving us some guidance, they're also sharing with us that this is an unprecedented situation. And we're going to have to examine in a few weeks, what, what impact did that have on the third quarter for our students that have never, we've never made contact with yet? Either because of incorrect addresses, maybe they've left. We've heard from a number of families and students that had to make alternative housing arrangements for their children while the parents maintain their job. And they're not able to have access to any kind of online learning, paper pencil learning, because the children have now become the caregivers. So we taking that into consideration, we do not profess that we're going to have concrete answers. But right now, what I've shared with the staff and what I will continue to share with the staff, we want to be able to locate our children and families. We want to find out how they are. We want to make certain that they're safe. And we want to recognize the fact that this is a pandemic and, and acknowledge the fact that if they have suffered through someone with COVID-19, if they've lost someone through COVID-19, that we want to care for their security and their health first. And then we'll worry about the other issues about how are we going to determine what that's going to mean for next school year. We already know that we're going to have to provide some kind of compensatory ed in terms of either a summer school. And I am very aware that it might not be this summer. This, we are told, could be multiple years of trying to recapture what, what people have lost. So I would almost ask, ask us to think about it in terms of, let's not, let's not think that we're going to bring children on grade level because no one's going to be on grade level. We might have to define grade level. We might have to change all of that. Because learning has been affected tremendously in a pandemic when some people are primarily concerned about putting food on their table for their families. And we have all of that in Waterbury. And I prefer that our families and our teachers take care of that first. And then we can worry about the rest of the stuff later. Because we, we are not going to catch up next year. That is not going to happen. We will put some structures in place. We will continue to develop our distance learning and we're going to get better at it. And we're going to have some face-to-face conversations and online learning and video conferencing when we get to that point. And then we'll have to revise some policies. But at this point, because we have so many children and families we have not been able to connect with, our primary interest is, are you safe? What do you need? How can we help you? And don't worry about whether you're going to pass or fail. We'll talk about that later. That, that's just where we are.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours for the rest of your discussion.
Okay, so I will start back from the very beginning of my presentation, which is a very brief overview of the strategic plan. Because while we're working on, on, on the, you know, the numerous issues that have and continue to arise because of the pandemic, we are moving forward with our strategic plan. There was a strategic plan meeting, I think it was last week. The week before that, we, we had some subcommittee meetings. They were very well presented. Subcommittee presented. Then the Center for School Change is taking the material that was presented. They're going to synthesize that. They're going to come back and they're going to work with the full strategic plan meeting on May the 11th, which is Monday. They're going to try to capture all of their thoughts and ideas of this strategic plan, which by the way, has been, you know, it's taken a shift during the pandemic. And, but, but the teams have done an awesome job. Once the steering, once this Center for School Change has captured all of the ideas of a draft, they're going to present it to the steering committee. And then they're going to come back and they're going to present it to you, Commissioner, so that you could see the work that the steering committee has done on your behalf. And then you're going to have some input and Center for School Change and the steering committee will take that and they will craft it into what will become our strategic plan, which will be ready for rollout by the time we start school in the fall, whether it's virtually, which I'm pretty sure some of it will be, or, or however we start school, the strategic plan will be ready for us to, for us to implement. That's the kind of the timeframe for that. We anticipate the meeting for this month and maybe a couple of other meetings that will take place with the subcommittees and the steering committee. And then of course, another product that Center for School Change will present to, to me and the steering committee in, in June.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, no hand waving. Dr. Ruffin, anything else you want to bring on?
Yes, the Teacher Appreciation Week, we celebrate great teachers this week. And there's Commissioner Van Stone, Commissioner Tom Van Stone sent a very nice note to the teachers. They were very appreciative. We've been communicating with our teachers via email and, and social media as well as in video conference meetings. But we want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to our wonderful teachers who are, you know, on, on, on Google Classroom, they're calling, they're talking with, they're communicating with students. And, and they're, they're, they're really doing a great job of pulling together to do what I consider to be almost the impossible. So I'm very, I'm very pleased and proud and I wish all of the teachers in our district a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week and a Happy Teacher Appreciation Day all of the time. I could not imagine a time in our history where we can appreciate teachers more than right now. Because every time we hear about any, any kind of distance learning, you know, students are missing that one-to-one contact with teachers. They're missing hearing them, seeing them, showing them how to do things in the classroom. So the teacher is irreplaceable and, and there's no other time that I could imagine because I've never been a part of any pandemic ever in my entire life. To see the teachers interacting with the families, I think the students are appreciative of that. Yet the teachers are dearly missed for that personal contact that they have with children. So Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our teachers. The next is the Teacher of the Year. There will be a big drum roll on May 15th because on social media, I will be announcing the Teachers of the Year for every building as well as the three finalists Teacher of the Year and the finalist Teacher of the Year for Waterbury. That person will, will be announced officially in a live presentation on May 15th. And I certainly hope that everybody will tune in. The presentation of the Administrator of the Year, we'll have that online as well for you to see. Our Administrator of the Year is Ms. Lori Eldridge. She was excited. She was recognized in a special meeting that we conducted two days ago to recognize her as the Administrator of the Year for 2020. And you will be seeing that live presentation. It was done already, but you'll be seeing a recording of that. So Jetha is working on it and it will be posted on social media. And then for my final part of the, of the presentation, but I'll answer any questions, want to give you an update on distance learning. You know, our teachers, we are able by building, that building principal is able to see all of the Google Classrooms. Our individual teachers are able to determine how many students are actually engaged in some kind of assignment, some kind of work, providing some kind of feedback. We are also going to have a concerted effort to locate those families that we're still not able to meet with. They're still not able to make connections, either because they don't answer the phone or maybe the addresses are incorrect, or maybe there's some kind of situation that we need to be aware of. So we're pulling together, individual schools are, pulling together their resources to make contact at the student's home or try to reach out through a network and trying to use all of our human resources to try to connect and find out where the families are. I do want to have a shout out to Reba Spera because Tomas has been very helpful in reaching out to some of our families. He's brought a list of student names to us. By school, we were able to connect them to the schools so that the school could contact parents or deliver the computers to the students so that they can continue their distance learning. We have distributed over 7,000 computers. So a shout out to the schools, a real shout out to Will Zuda and Will Clark and all the IT team and the system superintendents and, and every principals for working that out in a safe environment. We followed the protocols that were assigned for us. We worked collectively with the city team, you know, fire and, and police department to make certain, health department to make certain that we had safety protocol, distance, distancing during that administration. So pleased with that part of it, but we are not done. So distance learning is not a stop. We, we're never going to be finished creating distance learning. Some of the next steps that we're taking within the distance learning is also being certain that the students that only have packets, that there's a communication between the teacher and the student. Because distance learning just means learning from a distance. It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be computerized learning. So we still have families that are getting the packets. We have families that pick up the packet and they like the online learning as well. It's a struggle. Distance learning is, we have not arrived and we won't arrive this year. What distance learning is enabling us to do is create a platform that will continue to improve and grow. That next component will be to identify some times where teachers will be, I call them office hours, where teachers will be there live to be able to interact with their students. Before we get to that point, there will probably be some board policies that I will recommend that, that the board take a look at. Because then you have to consider privacy issues. We have to consider the fact that, you know, some people may not want anybody to have a video presence of their home. We have to make certain that we have the professional development that occurs for the student as well as for the teacher, as well as for parents to understand what the expectations are. We'll have to address things such as dress, such as protocols for behavior, protocols for feedback. We'll have to make certain that parents that allow them to, to, to allow us to be able to interact with their child via an online platform. And you have other children that are also having access to viewing your, your home as well. So we have to take all of that into consideration and we are as we begin to develop the next phase of our distance learning, which will involve some interaction, live interaction between teacher and student. And after we design that one, then we'll go more in depth to have more time where the teacher is explaining the lesson and some ample time for students to be able to work independently on their, on their work. and some ample time for students to be able to work independently on their on their work and to receive feedback from their teachers. So it's a process. We're not going to arrive there at the end of the month, but it is a process that we are going to work on collectively. And we're we're networking with other superintendents and other districts in the in the in the state. But also, there's a a platform that's that goes beyond that. You know, the the board has has been very gracious in allowing me to continue my engagement with AASA, which is a professional school administrators organization. This morning, I attended a a webinar with with different college deans and college personnel that are talking about how they're changing their online platform. And and they they are struggling with what that might look like for students. Students struggle in an online platform. It's not, it's not easy and it's complex. And 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 so we have to be able to develop our distance learning in Waterbury. That's going to meet the needs of our children, recognizing that sometimes there's too much work being assigned. Sometimes there's no collaboration to understand that if if I'm if I'm your Algebra I teacher, but someone else is your English I teacher and someone else might, you know, teaching, you know, your 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 science. We might be thinking about our subject and not thinking about how collectively you might have assignments from each one of us. It's just too much to complete in a given timeframe. For that reason, I am pleased that we are doing the pass and the incomplete. For that reason, I'm very pleased that that's happening. Because if a child doesn't turn in that homework assignment or doesn't provide it exactly that time, our policy or our change does allow for it completed at a later time. So for that that one reason, I I see that that's a definite benefit towards children because I don't think a child should be penalized. If you give me homework on Sunday and I just can't do it on Wednesday or Thursday, but I could do it by Friday. I think we should accept that. In our previous policy, we wouldn't accept it unless we gave some points off. And I think that's necessarily fair. We 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 are learning in this distance learning world and we're learning globally about what it might look like in Waterbury over a long haul. The governor announced that schools would would be closed. And and only today did I realize that when and and all of this time, I don't know what I was thinking. When the announcement was that schools will be closed for the remainder of this academic year, it dawned on me that no, schools are not closed. Schools are really not closed. We're not going back into the building for this academic year. But schools are not closed. So if I'm a if I'm a if I'm a child or, and you know, and I can just tell my parents, school to close. I I don't have to go back to school. But in reality, no, you're supposed to be back in some kind of virtual world with a teacher in your school counted as as being present until June 17th. Because that's when Waterbury's officialized day of school is. So I think we also, we probably need to go back and we need to communicate that in such a way that people understand. We're really not closed. We're just going to be offering everything that we offer in a virtual and you have to be engaged in some kind of way. Because I I think that maybe somebody might have interpreted that to me, well, that's it. We're we're going for the remainder of the school year. And so I I but officially, for the remainder of the school year, we're not going back into the school building and we will continue to offer some online distance learning and continue to evolve that system until school is officially closed for this academic school. We are still waiting for guidance on summer programs such as summer camps that the city does within our schools for our children. And we're also looking for guidance, which we should get by May 15th from the commissioner's office for summer school and those kinds of activities. And we know that it's all going to be in a virtual world. Whatever we offer will be in a virtual world. The schools and the are working on honors programs for their children, especially our seniors. And I think the eighth graders are working on something as well. And we're also working on a virtual high school graduation because our students will have a graduation. It will just be in a virtual world. And the principals and the students, whom I've met with twice, are working on what that might look like in a virtual setting with a professional, you know, consultant coming in and helping them with the virtual graduation. Our students were very clear. They wanted an element of surprise for their honors programs and we are committed to supporting the schools as they create this element of surprise for their students. We understand that this is a most unsettling time. But we're very grateful for, you know, for for good health and we want to keep everybody healthy and we want to make certain that we do celebrate the class of 2020 the way they deserve to be celebrated, but perhaps not what they anticipated. No one could have made this up in a million years. So that's, I think, the conclusion of what I need to present at this time. I I do have to brag on 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 three different, three different things. I want to brag on Ms. Jeanette Gumbalovich, who is a visual arts teacher at WAMs. She she was chosen to work with Holly Maxson, who is our supervisor of fine arts. And they presented a Fine Arts District Learning Guide. They shared that. It was a free webinar and it was shared as a journey of three different districts. Brookfield, Glossenbury, and Waterbury. And it was about teaching and learning and arts process at at distance. I understand that that was an outstanding presentation. So shout out to Jeanette and to WAMs for their outstanding participation in this. We want to brag about Northeast Middle School, who once again was our winner for the vocabulary spelling bee. North End Middle School is actually number one. So congratulations, North End. And we are very pleased. The board purchased Studiesync about a year, year and a half ago. And Studiesync, Waterbury students, Waterbury was the number one in the nation on its usage of Studiesync. And this was online, online platform. And we were number one in the nation for the use of that online platform for teaching and learning for our students. So I think that that's something that we should be very proud of. I'll answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Very nicely done. I just want to remind each of you, I cannot see that little stupid hand up, the little logo, because there's two boxes in front of me. I'm up to like 30 boxes and I can't differentiate it. So if you want my attention, wave your hand physically at me. And I see Karen Harvey, I think you want to be, you you want to say something?
Yeah, I didn't, I have had my hand up for a while, so I'm going to have to, doctor, I'm sorry, going to have to go back to almost the beginning because I had some questions for you. But I I just wanted to mention before I ask this question, just mention that we had the opportunity to via a Zoom meeting, Zoom conference, meet with our NAACP Youth Council. And they have, they expressed concerns with various things, one of which was the engagement part and how they expressed how they felt about distance learning, etc. I think it was very good for them to get that out and to and to talk about it. My question to you is, I know you mentioned that you did speak with, a couple of times speak with some of our our youth. What input did we give our students input on their grading, particularly our seniors?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I understand the question. What input did we give them on grades?
Yes. Did we have, did we, did we consider the student voice when we were looking at the, you know, the grading in terms of pass fail? Because I know the NAACP Youth Council had some things to say about it.
The grades were considered based on the guidance that we received from our our commissioner of ed. And they would, they did not include student voice in terms of, the student did not determine what the grading policy was going to be. The students got an interpretation of what that would be and very carefully articulated on the part of their school to explain how that would affect their GPA, their class rank and and entry into college.
Okay. Okay. You mentioned that you had a, there are a number of families that have not been contacted. How many families are we talking about?
We're talking a little over 30% of our student body of 19,000.
And who in the, were we using one person in the community to? Are are we using our our faith-based community to assist us with trying to attack with our students, with the families?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you everybody that we're using. I can tell you that the schools have many staff members, support staff members, such as parent liaison, attendance clerks and attendance counselors and social workers in various positions. And schools have identified their team to help them with that outreach. I mentioned specifically Tomas with the Reba Espera, who contacted me and has been working to identify students and families that may be English limited to be able to connect with them. And he called me and I was very appreciative of that. And we were able to make connections with the children's schools. But I've had other people to to reach out and then have done that, not necessarily from a community position or community support. But I was very appreciative of the fact that he did that.
Okay, so my my, the reason why I'm mentioning this, Dr. Ruffin, is that we have other community folks that would love to help us with this. So I'm I'm just wondering, you know, why we're not utilizing others to to assist us with our students?
I I I was, I I don't, I didn't say it to me that other people are not, but maybe I don't know about the other people that are doing that. I can reach out to the schools or you can ask people to contact me. I will be more than happy to put them in connection with schools that are still trying to reach out to students and families. I do know that we have a number of people that do that for me, such as I have, you know, a liaison to the homeless. There's an outreach there. You know, I have liaison for school climate and school attendance and they're reaching out. So we have other people that are helping us, but I wanted to bring attention to someone who called me and said, how can, how can you connect me with with these resources for these families? And I was able to do that.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure that we're utilizing all of our resources as many as we can. Talking about 19,000 students and, you know, we have community members that really want to help, they want to help with the Chromebooks if we need them. So I just want to make sure we're utilizing, you know, it, you know, it takes a village. We always hear that. So I just want to make sure we're utilizing our community members, our faith.
I I believe our schools are reaching out and they have some wonderful partners that are helping them. I I can only speak to the ones that have reached out to me. But I, the primary contact, I've always felt that way and I still do. First way, the first contact, the first part, the point of contact when we felt that we were making a difference for our children was when the teacher started making that connection. So the closest a person is to a child and their family, that's when we can make the most impact. So I I I love to know who all of the the resources are. We we need them and we support them and we are so happy to have those partnerships.
Okay, so I will see, I will provide you with that, some names so that we can, you know, try to reduce this number of of students or families that have not been connected. I think that's very important. So with that, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey. Anyone else? Jason Van Stone, Commissioner Van Stone? I see your hand. You go to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. To kind of take the other side of the coin on Karen's comments, and I think that was something I had asked last meeting. While I I truly believe we're doing everything we need to 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 reach out to all the students and their parents, I wanted to make sure that on the kind of flip side of the coin, that every one of our teachers is actively engaging in their respective classrooms. You know, anecdotally, and people who've reached out to me, the vast majority is saying, you know, while it's not a perfect system, you know, my kid's teacher did this or my kid's teacher did that, thank you very much. But there is still kind of in the minority perspective, you know, you know, my kid's got five teachers, three of them are doing a bang-up job. Two, I'm not too sure, you know, what to expect in this class. So I just wanted to make sure that while we're doing everything, kind of reach out to the to the students, we're also, you know, kind of imparting to the teachers that this isn't summer vacation. This is, you're still teaching a class, albeit from maybe your kitchen. But all the things that we need to do to make sure the student's successful, that they're going to have access to. Whether or not on their end, they pick up the packet or dial into Google Classroom, whatever. We can't necessarily control that, but I wanted to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that when the parent or when the student does reach out for that next assignment, that's something there that's waiting for them. When the assignment is, you know, finished, there's feedback of some sort. You know, constructive criticism on what could be better, what they need to work on, what they've mastered. Again, I know it's not a perfect, you know, situation we're working in right now. But I want to make sure we're doing everything we can from our side to make sure that every student out there who is trying to to get the best education they can has that opportunity.
Absolutely. And I would ask that when something happens, when there's some disparity in the quality or the work that's happening, I would like to, and I hope that all of our, 10 of our board members will help us with that. Please direct the parent to notify the principal because we need to know, we need to help. Maybe it's a matter of helping someone with access or maybe it's just, you know, just like in regular time when you notice that, you know, for the teachers that reached out before anybody, you know, told them that they had to. So they're, the same kind of variation in teaching and teacher quality that existed before online exists online and we just need to make sure that we're aware of it. And we need to constantly make certain that we're raising the level of expectancy and accountability for everybody. So when that is happening, and I I have no reason to doubt that 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 definitely is happening, please have them make personal contact with the principal because we need to make sure that we get everybody on board. As we begin to add more components of that distance learning, that's going to be critically important. Because once we start having the the face-to-face interaction with a student, we don't want some teachers to have that interaction and the other ones are still only posting online.
100%, that that was, that was my concern. I thank you. And that's generally what I do when when talking to the parents, you know, just direct them back to their own school. One other thing, you had talked about graduation and and doing it virtually. Is there any opportunity, whether it's using some big open space, the the Crosby Football Field, the Municipal Stadium Football Field, where we could, albeit in a limited fashion, still have an in-person graduation? Even if it's not, you know, mid-June, it's later in August. Has there been any consideration to try to utilize some of those larger open spaces that have plenty of parking where we can still respect all the social distance guidelines but still have the opportunity for these kids to, you know, cap what is a very tough year for them to kind of end in a high note? Is there any consideration to those things or is this kind of virtually how how we're going to go forward?
The students actually discuss it. You know, we had a a discussion around some options that could occur, including, you know, the one that you just mentioned about a large area and and maybe we could do distance, this social distancing and maybe we can have a large, you know, football field or a a large area. And the students even asked, you know, if we can't have it in June, could we perhaps have it in in August or in the fall? And the students themselves, and it, just a really sharp group of students. Every group of students that I've spoken with, our our wonderful youth from the NAACP, our wonderful students that joined in on the call for seniors, the ones that call me on the telephone and the ones that I'm getting ready to meet with next week. All all of them have wonderful things to say. But the students said themselves, while they were trying to figure out a way to have a fall graduation, well, some of us might not be here. You know, some of us might be going out of state to college. And then some of them said, well, Mike, I've already heard from my college and we're not going because everything is going to be online. Or I don't really know what I am going to be able to go because I I haven't heard back from the college. whether they're going to go in person or whether it's going to be online. So maybe most of us won't be able to be back together again. Uh, so we just brainstormed. We didn't say, no, you can't. Um, no, we, and I certainly did not say, no, I'm not going to consider it. Because I, I would consider whatever would be healthy and safe for our students. But I also know that if we try a, a, a graduation anywhere with, with wonderful class of 2020 and try to say that we are going to social distance, it's not happening. You know, they're excited. They haven't seen each other in months. Uh, you know, families want to see their children walk across the stage. They can't shake hands with anybody. You know, we're at the point where we can't breathe on anybody. So I don't know how to make that work. But Commissioner Van Stone, if I could make that work for the students, yes, I would, but I don't see that happening.
I think that's a fair answer. And I just wanted to make sure it was something was considered. If the students have already, at least to some degree, had their voice heard, you know, I obviously would bend to the will of the students. But as long as it was something that was in the consideration, I'd appreciate that. Uh, I, I'd finish on.
I haven't, I haven't written it off. I, I, I have not written it off to say it can never happen. All I'm saying is with the social distancing and the guidelines and the rules and the regulations that we're currently under, I don't see that that could happen in May, June or July, and I don't know what August is going to bring. And I would not want them to miss out on some celebratory event i- in, in the interim.
I, I get that and, and, and I understand that. And I, whatever we have to do, we'll do. I just wanted to make sure it was considered. Uh, the last thing I would say is I want to just echo all the things you had said with all the, the, the positive news. Because in this world, there still is some positive news. So I think it is important to say, uh, you know, all the great things that are happening in the district and, and I wanted to especially echo, um, the kudos to North End Middle School, my alma mater, um, for the great job in the spelling bee. And, and thank you, uh, Dr. Ruffin, uh, President Pagano, I yield back to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else got their hand up? This, this, this system is breaking down because most of you are frozen on it. Uh, Anne Sweeney, did I see your hand up? Hello, Anne?
Thank you, President Pagano. Dr. Ruffin, I, I just want to ask, um, a clarifying question. Um, and while this must, might be a mute point for some people, um, the governor's guidance gave two distinct, um, ratings. And as I understand what you have sent, we are doing a pass incomplete, not a pass fail. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're doing a pass and, and, and incomplete. And I, I think I'm going to defer that last portion over to my chief academic officer. Did we add a, a, a place there for possible failure?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, uh, it's according in the board policy for incompletes that, uh, a grade would be put in by the end of the next quarter. And so, um, in terms of the, the pass incomplete, you know, that, that would more be looking into the fall and giving us opportunity depending on what happens over the summer, what happens. Uh, because we don't know what's going to happen in the summer. We don't know what's going to happen when we come back in fall. Gives opportunity, uh, for students that we couldn't reach for whatever reason. Um, uh, for students that are, are currently being shuffled to family members for, um, and can't access the learning. So instead of giving them the F right away, gives them a, a little leeway for us to make that contact, find out what's going on in each and every student's life. And they, to give them the opportunity to, to, to not just get that test thrown onto their transcript or into their, into their grades. But it's an incomplete to give them an option for us to work with that student to get into a pass. Um, and, and there's language already in your policies for that incomplete.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, so, so bottom line, it, it is a pass, it is a pass incomplete. Not a pass fail.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We thought, yes, we thought that'd be, uh, a fairer way to go about it.
Thank you. Vice President Harvey, you have a comment, question?
Yeah, just, um, question, um, to Dr. Ruffin. Um, we were talking about, first of all, I'm assuming not, the fourth quarter is just, we're not grading that. We're just going by the, the, uh, first through the, uh, third marking period. Dr. Ruffin?
I'm sorry?
It's hard to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I heard that.
Okay. My question is, I'm just confirming that we're just going counting the first through the third marking period. And not counting the fourth.
So we, we are in the third marking period now and we will apply what we said in the third marking period. We, we have still to determine, based on what we're doing now, we'll do that in the fourth.
Okay. So then my question is this. With, we are using Google Classroom. What matrix have we developed, if any, um, around, uh, student participating with Google Classroom? Um, for example, we have in our, in our current, uh, policies, attendance. How is attendance being counted? Is attendance, uh, based on the sign-in? Um, have we developed any matrix around that?
We are not developing matrix over attendance. Uh, the accountability system, as we once knew, it no longer exists. We are monitoring participation. And, and within the guidelines that have been issued, for a student to be considered pass, they have to demonstrate some kind of mastery on the topic presented and then understand that the student has a unique situation. So it's very loosely defined to be able to say if a student is trying, that counts and it matters.
Okay, so how are, how are you monitoring? How do you know if a student has signed in, uh, to Google, Google Classroom? Does the teacher know that? Number one. And number two?
Yes.
Please give a status on where we stand with, uh, the video portion of the Google Classroom.
Um, the students are logging in and the teacher knows which students that teacher is interacting with. So it's down to the level that we have the most learning going. Teacher knows student, student knows how to interact with the teacher and be able to submit that work. So it's at the teacher level and principals, just like when everybody was getting evaluated, uh, which, which they no longer, uh, happening, uh, that has been waived. But the teacher and the principal knows how many students are logging in, uh, how many students have actually made any kind of engaging contact and which ones are still remaining. So it's at the campus, it's at the level that it needs to be, which is close to, to the teacher and the teacher knows and the principal knows. Um, in answer to your, your other question, um, and I forgot what your other question was.
Um, I think it was around attendance. I think you may have, you may have answered that. Um, but since you, since we, I, I'm trying to remember what my question was too, but
It was the attendance matrix.
Promise is, yeah, yeah, it was that. Yep. Is there a matrix now?
The, the matrix is, are you logging in? Are you doing the work and are you learning? That's the matrix. In this pandemic case, that's what I expect.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The system knows. Thank you, Vice President Harvey. Any other questions or comments? Wave your hand, please. All right. I think we are at the end of our evening. Anyone else have any other things to say, please? The floor is yours. Nothing? Can I have a motion?
You fell moved.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you very much. Night, everyone.